One minute. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kodiak Borough Assembly. This is Thursday, May 18th, and we'll have the invocation by Major Dave Davies. So have you got use to that title yet, Presiding Officer?
Yeah.
Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we have much to be thankful for. We just thank you for your privilege of freedom to come and gather here this evening and do the work of the Island Borough. And Father, just now, I wanted to ask a special blessing upon all our first responders, our VPSOs in the villages, our police, EMS, fire, our hospital staffs. Father, all these first responders, we just ask your continued blessing upon them. And Father, even now, we ask your blessing upon our Presiding Officer, our Assembly Members and Staff. Thank you, Father, for your continued blessing upon our Island community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiak Alutic people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutic region. We also recognize the Alutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Lidue.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mayor Arnt, you have a quorum.
Move to excuse Mayor Scott Arnt, who was out due to attending the NACO conference.
Second.
Voice vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Voice vote carries.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Voice vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of May 4th, 2023. Next is citizens' comments. The phone numbers are for calling in are 907-486-3231. Toll-free is 1-855-492-9202. Please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all your remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback.
Good afternoon. I just want to introduce myself as I'm in consideration for appointment by the mayor for the Architectural and Engineering Review Board. My name's Cody Allen, and I just felt obligated to introduce myself to the Assembly before you voted on that. So I would also offer an opportunity, if you have any questions, I'm open to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for an opportunity to volunteer. This will be the second time this year that I've had a chance to engage in my community, so I appreciate the opportunity. Have a good day.
Thank you. Awards and presentation. Oh, Mr. Conrad. Go ahead.
So the beginning of the month begins fire season according to the State of Alaska, Division of Forestry, which means that if you are going to do an open burn, anything over the size of the campfire, you are required by Borough Code to go online and get a burn permit. I would strongly urge that. I've seen several burns that have gone on in the last week or so that were not permitted. If we don't know where you're at beforehand, it takes us longer to get there. And when this grass is dry, despite the fact that you think there's been a bunch of rain, a little bit of wind dries everything out. I've put one too many of these out in my lifetime, so I appreciate some folks paying attention and use that burn permit system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any information on awards and presentations? Committee reports. Are there any committee reports tonight? Yes.
The Health Facilities Advisory Board met, and there are a few items on the agenda, so I won't go into too much detail about that, but just to say that we've only been meeting for a few months, and we're already seeing a lot of really great traction, and there's a lot of really great information coming out of those meetings. And yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okeydoke.
And our next meeting, I don't think we've established our next meeting yet, but I think we're looking at meeting quarterly.
Okay. Ms. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. I attended a Swampy Board of Directors meeting this morning, and Swampy's going through a big period of change. They have a new Executive Director, a new Mariculture Specialist, and a new Special Projects Officer, but we have a lot of Kodiak representation. The new President is Terry Haynes. I'm still sitting on the board, and our new Mariculture Specialist is Nick Mangini, also from Kodiak. So Kodiak has a really strong showing, and we're going through all of the beginning of the fiscal year documents with getting Swampy eligible for all of their grant systems. So that's pretty much what we did today, but I think that it's in very good hands, and the new Executive Director seems like he's off to a really good start. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any man— the manager's report is up next.
Thank you. Good evening, Assembly, and— well, I guess it's all Assembly tonight. The package is thick, but I will promise not to read as much as I did last week. Union negotiations, Dora was out this week, so it was Dave Conrad, Megan Christensen, and myself, meeting with the union representatives on both Monday and Tuesday. As we get closer to the end of negotiations, there are several items from the contract that are in a package. All of the items, except for one, are tentatively approved, but we're stuck on one, and I put that on the agenda for the special meeting for May 25th. So next weekend, we'll talk about that one item in executive session to see if we can find some agreeable terms on that one item that's left. Bayside Fire Chief Recruitment. Dave and I, along with Megan Christensen, completed interviews and ratings this week, and we are looking forward to a job offer process that is in starting. So we should have an offer out on that soon, or the process started. New positions. Last week, we asked about the cost of positions. That whole thing passed the blue paper in your packet. It will give you the information on the cost of positions and what the loaded annual compensation for those positions are, and I listed what that means so that we would all have an understanding of why that makes such a significant jump up to that second number. And then I included a couple of different job descriptions in there, one for the last time, we had a Resource Management Officer, and then there's actually two in there for a project manager, and that's because those have changed quite a bit between the 2014 and 2008 times that we went out for that. So as you can see, neither of these descriptions really are meeting the bill of what we talked about, what we needed, so those would have to be redone. I did not redo that because I figured unless you were going to approve the money, that I would just be wasting my time. So as we move forward on that, we've talked about what we want those positions to do, and I think that would be great. I told you about the Swampy Board meeting. One thing that I wanted to highlight is that in our previous meetings, we have discussed the ending of funding for the Carlock and Larson Bay schools, and I was reminded as I signed that check this month for the Carlock School on how much the electricity and fuel oil was for out there, and I just wanted to be sure that I spoke with Mr. Conrad, and we made sure that we were letting everyone involved know that that was still our intention. I don't want all of a sudden the stuff to stop being done, and they don't know. So we're making sure that we get all of our stuff taken care of. There's still maintenance on those facilities that we need to take care of before we can sign it over in Larson Bay and then close it in Carlock. So just wanted to put that on everyone's radar because we talked about that, and we heard from those communities, and then we really haven't talked about it since then. In assessing— SEMA wanted everyone to know, and I think that you guys got an email that said there were as many as a possible 40 extra $150,000 exemptions for either senior citizens or disabled veterans that might still come through, so that will change our taxable value by as much as $6 million. And assessing has gone out and started their 2024 fieldwork. They were supposed to go out on a remote trip, but it was already canceled due to weather forecasts over the weekend. In Community Development, we will be having a Board of Adjustment. We did have one in 2021, but it had been quite a while before then since we had one. So NOVA is suggesting, and I think it's a great idea, that we have training from our Borough Attorney on how that process looks, so everyone's up to speed. And then SEMA is actually going to invite the members of planning and zoning to that as well, so everyone has the same understanding as we go into that Board of Adjustment. And that should happen, the meeting right before June 15th, so the 8th. So that'll be a good fresh refresher for everyone. After two and a half years, after tonight, when we put those two people on parks and rec, they're finally going to have enough people to meet, so everyone in Community Development is really excited about that board being back together. SEMA left on vacation this morning, and she's out until June 12th. In Engineering and Facilities, we're going to hear a lot about their projects as we go through contracts, but I just wanted to mention that we had someone come up and look at the swimming pool. We got their review. It's being evaluated. That initial assessment brought a lot of questions up, so we're waiting to get some of those immediate questions answered before that report goes out. The leachate treatment plant, the interior machinery was set. Columns for the building were placed, and the roof truss sections are assembled and ready to be put on tomorrow. So that building is actually coming up really fast. Bayside Classroom Edition is getting reviewed by that board tonight. They're meeting right now as we speak, so we should have some feedback from them. And finally, in Finance and IT, we're making progress on that new property assessment and taxation software. You wouldn't think that it took a lawyer to buy software, but it does when it's this big, and those packages are so big. So these companies make software far beyond what our Borough needs are, so we pick the parts that we want, and then we ask questions about those parts, and then they give us an estimate back, and we go back and forth until we get it exactly how we want. And I think the important thing for the Assembly to know is that just because we buy this, we still have like a two-year migration into the software. So Assessing and Finance is excited to get that going so we can— the program that we use now is so old that getting support on it has become very difficult. So they're excited to get into something that's supported by the manufacturer. And that's all I have for tonight. Are there questions? Scott?
You mentioned here a list of pending items for discussion, the E911 system. Where are we with that? Have we done any discussion with the city on that?
I— not since I've been in the job, Scott. That's leftover from the list of pending items that have just been there. The last time I remember us talking about that was in a joint work session with the city, and so that's just something that they have concern about, and I know that it should be addressed at some point, so that's why I left it on there. But I haven't made any progress on that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Sorry, Scott.
Go ahead.
Hi. I'm happy to see that you guys are keeping in touch with Carlock and Larson Bay. I know that they're always wondering about what's happening there, but my question is, under also pending items for discussion about the funding opportunities for road repairs and improvements, I know that the Shakmanoff Quarry is now—is going to be open this summer, and I'm wondering if there's going to be—I know I talked with you guys before about this, and I'm hoping to see if we can get some of that granite here for use in Kodiak this spring, when it thawed out. We all saw what the dust was like on roads. If we could get some of that granite crushed, and we could use some of that sand for sanding roads, that would be great. I did—I used it in Yuzinkie, and it— once you crush it, it's 98% dust-free, so I think it would be great for the health of the community, and so I'm hopeful that we can get some of that over here.
Thanks, Joe. I did take your email and talk to Mr. Conrad about it, and he has sent it out to our service districts to ask them if they have any interest or need for it, or if we could work it into their schedules. But as of right now, I know the Borough doesn't have any need for it, the Borough itself, but that doesn't mean the service districts don't, so hopefully, if there is interest, we'll hear about that soon.
Yes, Jeff.
Thank you. Just with regards to the review in executive session of union negotiations and the new positions, I know previously we had requested from Finance clarity on the fund balance, and I know the fund balance, as it was explained to me before, is kind of like an octopus, that there's the big pool of fund balance, and then there are branches that are designated to other areas. And I'd like to make the request that that be provided to the Assembly prior to us going or while we're in executive session, and prior to next week's discussions about the budget, when we're talking about new positions and decisions need to be made, and one of those decisions next week is going to be funding to the school district. So having that full picture of where that money is at and what it can be used for would be very helpful for me to make that decision, and I know Dora's been gone, but we didn't get it before. We got a single number, and that's not what I'm looking for. That's just my request, and that has to have other support, but—
Well, everyone's nodding their head, so I think that you have your support up there. Dora is just coming back from vacation, was planning on being here tonight, but her plane was delayed out of Seattle, so she will be back in the office tomorrow, so I'll make sure she understands the request.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Messages from the Borough Mayor. Well, the mayor isn't here, so we can move on. Consideration of unfinished business. There's a motion on the floor, the move to authorize the manager to award contract number FY 2019-10S, change order number 19, to Jensen Yorba Wall Incorporated, in the amount of $293,563 for the Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center and Kodiak Community Health Center to provide space analysis and planning to understand the current and future state of the facilities. Mr. Conrad.
Yes, good evening, and thank you. We— this effort came out of my involvement with Providence, as well as the Health Facilities Committee, and we've been—we worked on this and reworked it. The total is $290,000. We have received a grant from the Department of Health and Equitable Communities Grant from the Department of Health, State of Alaska, for $26996. We've also been in communication with this department and anticipate that they're going to fund the entire study with another future addition to that grant. Concerns about this were that we were not going to be speaking to everyone. I have spoken with the principals of both companies that are going to be involved with this. It is their intention to put an invitation out to all of the parties that are involved in healthcare in the community, because it's the only way we're going to have a total snapshot of what we think it is. The only thing that I'm going to add is that this is a snapshot in time, and it's also a little bit of a crystal ball, because we are trying to look into the future, and we all know how technological changes can occur quite rapidly. If there's any questions specific, I'm happy to answer.
There any discussion on the Assembly? Any questions? Doesn't appear to be any. So can we have a roll call, vote on the motion?
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
Item 14, consideration of calendar new business. Contract number FY 2022-29. Change order number five, authorization for the approval of the leachate treatment plant pre-treatment facility project with Dawson Construction LLC.
Move to authorize the manager to approve contract number FY 2022-29. Change order number five, authorization for leachate treatment plant pre-treatment facility project with Dawson Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $46,879.93.
Second.
Mr. Conrad.
Again, thank you. This is basically to reroute and connect the return pipe from the system back to the leachate treatment plant. We have to have a back—we have to have a path back to a holding area in case water needs to be deserted— diverted, excuse me. This is the best path because of how deep it is located, the HDPE return line, because of how deep it is in the ground, how close it is to foundation, how close it is to our electrical supply. The Brecken Enterprises will be bringing in a special, specific trench shoring box. This is necessary to protect the workers, and it's a very expensive connection, but it is needed, and this is the most cost-effective way that we can figure out how to do this. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions from the Assembly? Seeing none, can we have a roll call on the motion?
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no's.
Contract number FY 2023-46. Authorizing the manager to execute fire and smoke damper repairs at the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center with remediate DBA fire door solutions.
Move to approve contract number FY 2023-46. Authorizing the manager to execute fire and smoke damper repairs at the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center with remediate DBA fire door solutions in the amount of $43,780.19.
Second.
Mr. Conrad.
So we have two virtually identical items here in a row. Basically, smoke dampers are in your HVAC system. They are there so that if there is a fire or a detected fire, that the smoke dampers have a door in that closes that reduce or limit the ability of the system to transmit smoke from one space to another, to allow time for the occupants to evacuate the building in—which is what they're supposed to do when the smoke alarm goes off. These are required to be inspected every six years by the NFPA regulations. The best of my knowledge, from what I can see, that has never taken place in the 20-plus years this building is built. So this is a life safety issue, and as discussed last week, you'll see this theme continue. The manager and I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the school district on this specific topic as well. And to answer a question that Mr. Turner had, I did contact these folks. Apparently, it's very frequent not to account for all of these items on a as-built, so consequently, as they get up into the areas where they are, surprise, there's another smoke damper. Costs you 55 bucks for them to look at it.
Is there any discussion on the part of the Assembly? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so if it costs us $55 for them to look at it, then for them to replace it with what we're authorizing this evening, this is for what they know of right now. Is that correct?
This is—in this case, they've already been through and did an evaluation. We paid $7,000 or $9,000 here a few months ago, and this is tied into the inspection that was done associated with the hospital. So they have put their eyeballs on it, but that's a standard.
Right.
If you got another one, it's 55 bucks, and then the cost of the repair would be above and beyond.
So we don't anticipate an additional cost because they've already had eyes on it? Is that fair?
I—I work with my fingers crossed all the time, sir.
Yep, fair enough.
Mr. Conrad, I have a question. Are we keeping a record of all of these smoke dampers? Because if people don't look at them every six years, then we're facing another surprise down the road.
We are updating our as-bills.
Okay.
I'm not going to speak to what's going to happen six years from now.
Good idea. Thank you. Is there any other Assembly discussion on this? Can we have a roll call, vote on the motion, please?
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
We have no resolutions. We do have some ordinances for— no ordinances for introduction. We do have other items. Authorize the manager to approve reimbursement for fire and smoke damper repairs at the Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center with remediate DBA fire door solutions.
Move to authorize the manager to approve reimbursement of the fire and smoke damper repairs at the Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center and remediate DBA fire door solutions in the amount of $111,771.99.
Second.
Mr. Conrad.
So I guess in this particular case, what we need to do is— on this whole theme is thank the Joint Commission for having a requirement to inspect the hospital, because this is what started this. Although these were identified a number of years ago by the Joint Commission, they were never looked at. I won't speak to conversations that were held between the Borough and the hospital in the past. I can only deal with what I myself have dealt with. This is an effort to do the right thing, to take care of life safety. This is a reimbursement to Providence who needed to move forward because of their timeframe that they were given for repair, and I think this is the right thing to do, and I would encourage you to pass this request.
Is there any comment from the Assembly or questions? Go ahead.
Similar question as before, so they haven't had eyes in all those spaces yet just because of the lack of access panels, if I remember correctly from the work session?
No, not actually. The access doors that they're talking about are actually on the side— on the duct that's right before the smoke damper, so they'll cut an oblong hole that they'll maybe put a plug in, but you have to be able to open that to put a camera or visually verify that the smoke damper actuator actually functions. So that's what that door is. These are all on catwalks and stuff that are up above the ceiling, so it's—you know, it's the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain kind of thing. You don't see these things.
Do we— but I remember reading in this as well that any additional dampers they discover, we're looking at that $55 for them to evaluate it. Am I correct?
That's correct, and that is also due to the fact that, for some reason, there was a period of time where Borough staff in the Borough decided that good, proper as-bills, if you didn't do those at the end of a job, it costs less money. So we're dealing with some sketchy as-bills, so those will also be updated.
Okay, so as they do that examination, I guess what I'm trying—to what I'm getting at is if we have additional dampers that they discover that are not functioning, we're going to be looking at additional funds.
There's— there is always that potential, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. I appreciate your meeting with the school district tomorrow, but do school buildings have these dampers too in their system?
Anybody that has a forced air large commercial building likely has smoke dampers.
So would we be— would we be used— have— excuse me, would we have to pay $50 to evaluate all of those in the school district, and could we be looking at even a larger number to replace those if we're under the same standards as hospitals? to replace those if we're under the same standards as hospitals?
My ask, well, I don't know that we're in the same standards as hospitals. However, if there is no scheduled maintenance or examination of these, then I believe we have a problem. So consequently, one of the asks that I have done so far is to see if the school district staff can provide us with the proper blueprints that would indicate it'll be a mechanical, electrical, or fire alarm type drawing so that we can send these to the vendor so they can prepare an estimate. They're not, we're not just going to bring them up and make them climb around in the catacombs of the schools. We're going about this in a practical manner, and hopefully, it can be a collaborative effort between the school district employees and the borough employees.
Certainly. It's just something to think about in the future if it's very expensive, you know, to carry on these repairs and what kind of priority it would have depending on what we find out.
Well, once again, I think you need to look at population size of the school. What are the functional areas? Quite frankly, this should not be an issue. People should get out of the building, but these are there for a reason, and they need to function.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, can we have a roll call on the motion, please?
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lido?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
Confirmation of mayoral appointment to the Architectural Engineering Review Board of Mr. Cody Allen and Mr. Daniel Rohr.
Move to confirm the mayoral appointment of Mr. Cody Allen to the Architectural Engineering Review Board for a term to expire December 31, 2023, and Mr. Daniel Rohr for a term to expire December 31, 2025.
Second.
Staff report from the clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Presiding Officer. I would like to thank Mr. Allen and Mr. Rohr for turning in their applications. There are currently three vacant seats on the ARB board, and this appointment would place Mr. Allen in a vacant seat to expire December 31, 2023, and Mr. Rohr with a term to expire December 31, 2025. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Delgado?
I have no question, but I'd like to thank the applicants as well. I think it's important to have our boards and commissions filled, and so I'm happy to see people stepping up. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, can we have a roll call on the motion, please?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lido?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
Confirmation of the mayoral appointment to the Parks and Recreation Committee of Mr. Travis Cooper and Ms. Tracy Chandler.
Move to confirm the mayoral appointment of Mr. Travis Cooper to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2024, and Ms. Tracy Chandler for a term to expire December 31, 2025.
Staff report?
Second.
Keep doing that.
Thank you, Deputy Presiding Officer and members of the assembly. I am also excited to see Ms. Tracy Chandler, who turned in her application, and Mr. Cooper for the Parks and Rec. It's been years, I think, that they have not had a form, and so I, this appointment would place Ms. Chandler to a term to expire December 2025, and then Mr. Cooper to a seat to expire December 31, 2024. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the assembly? Mr. Lido?
Yeah, just to note, I asked SEMA, who schedules the meetings, and she's on vacation, so she indicated that the first meeting of the Parks and Rec Board with the new quorum will be in late June or early July. So stay tuned.
Okay, can we have a roll call on the motion, please?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lido?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Six yes, zero no.
Again, citizens' comments with agenda items not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. The phone numbers are 907-486-3231, and toll-free is 1-855-492-9202. Please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all your remarks to the assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. We'll wait just a minute for phone calls to make it through the ether. Any calls? Moving on, assembly member comments. Mr. Lido?
I would like to compliment our new manager for a great report, and I appreciate all the work that she's done in the new position. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I just would like to say thank you for, to staff that is responsible for writing the grant for $260,996, which saves the borough quite a bit of money. So I'm grateful for their talents and their efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Just thanks to the staff and the clerks and manager's office for some very timely responses to our questions and concerns. Appreciate it.
Mr. Delgado?
I'd like to thank the applicants for the boards and commissions, and also remind everybody out there that there's an empty seat here next to us, and I encourage you guys to apply for that as well. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
No comment. Thank you.
For my comment, I'm back from the forays into Europe. The Vermeer exhibit was spectacularly good. The thing I had not counted on was jet lag, which was as appalling now as it was the last time I encountered it, which was about, I don't know, 25 years ago or so. At any rate, Amsterdam looks prosperous, and the Ubers were working overtime from the airport to the hotel. So thank you for that. Anything else? The borough offices will be closed Monday, May 29, 2023, in observation of Memorial Day. Does there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Deputy Presiding Officer, please also announce the upcoming meetings.
Oh, the special meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 25, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers, which will be followed by a work session. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 1, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. Does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Do we announce that the borough offices will be closed on Monday, May 29, in observance for Memorial Day?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Voice, 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 vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None.
Mr. Chauvin?
Toy boat, toy boat, toy boat.
Yeah.
You know, when they paid Abercrombie, they used the airport grant, these grants paid the airport, and when they did Abercrombie, they had extra.